No.
Oh, I didn't even think of that. They're gonna come in? Okay. Good evening, this is the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, March 12th, 2013. And first item is, um, roll call.
Councilmember Elliott?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Here.
Mayor Gottel is absent, Mayor Protam Sandell.
Here. Actually, I'm gonna, Tom, did you wanna make your motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, uh, Mayor Protam, that we excuse our mayor, who was at a conference in DC on "For the Good of the City."
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, we have fifteen minutes, do we have anyone here for the open forum?
Didn't do the pledge yet, if you wanna do the pledge.
It's not even on my agenda.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I have Pledge of Allegiance after open forum.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
No open forum.
Okay, well then we can move right on to the Pledge of Allegiance. You'll join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got it right.
And we're having a little trouble with our mics today, usually we have someone in the back room who can keep us on task and make sure we can be heard, so if you don't hear us when we're talking, we've maybe switched a mic off or something, raise your hands and we'll, that'll remind us to check our mics. Um, first item is approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 26th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, presentations, and we have a very full audience, and for very good reason this evening, and I'd like to call on Police Chief Todd Sandell to take over at this point.
Thank you, members of the council, tonight's a very exciting night for us again, we have a couple presentations, first I'd like to call upon Officer Orlando Zabala to come up front. On December 18th, at about 7:30 in the evening, this last, uh, December 12th, uh, in 2012, Officer Zabala responded to a suicidal female, sitting on the edge of the Portland Avenue Bridge over Highway 62. Officer Zabala and a Hennepin County Deputy arrived on the scene, they found a female, suicidal, standing on the opposite side of the rail. Officer Zabala and the Deputy observed that the female was leaning forward with her arms extended behind her, hanging onto the rail about to let go. While she was distracted, Officer Zabala was able to sneak up behind her, undetected, just as she was about to release herself from the rail and fall onto Highway 62. He was able to grab a hold of her from the opposite side of the rail, and pull her back to the rail, and then with the assistance of the Hennepin County Deputy, was able to handcuff this female to the rail. She was within seconds of falling onto the highway, and most likely a sure death. They held her on the, on the edge of the rail until they were able to get fire personnel to respond with a ladder truck about twenty minutes later, and remove her safely from the bridge. Without the actions of Officer Zabala that evening, there's no question that this female would have passed away. Due to the immediate response and these decisive actions taken on December 18th, 2012, the victim's life was undoubtedly saved, therefore it gives me great ple- pleasure to present you, the Richfield Department Commendation for Heroism and Lifesaving Measures. And now we'd like to call upon Officer Drew Griford, Gifford, please. This is an award we give out every year, uh, this is not for a single act, this is done by our sergeants, our sergeants do an annual evaluation of all the officers on the department, and the criteria for the award is not necessarily a single act, but more based upon their outstanding performance throughout the year in numerous areas of service to the community. By unanimous decision this year, the sergeants awarded this Officer of the Year Award to Officer Drew Gifford. To summarize a few of the areas that Officer Gifford was recognized for are as follows: Contributions to the community, Officer Gifford clearly understands the department's commitment to our community and his individual responsibilities. Throughout the year, he volunteers his own time to participate in department and community events, some of these events include our Joint Community Policing Project, our Career Fair, and is very active in our Crime Free Multi- Multi-Free Housing Program. Another area is recognized for is dedication to the department. In addition to his regular assigned duties, Officer Gifford has volunteered for additional duties and responsibilities, these include Field Training Officer. In 2012, as you might recall, was a challenging year for our department, we hired six and trained six new officers. In his role as a Field Training Officer, Officer Gifford trained five of these six new officers, and it resulted in him spending over three hundred and forty hours of training hours with these new recruits, this was an extraordinary effort on his part. Officer Gifford also serves as our property room custodian, he spearheaded our transition to our new evidence and property barcoding system. In 2012, our property room processed over eight hundred cases and over eighteen hundred individual evidence or property items. Officer Gifford is also recognized for his leadership, he always maintains a strong positive attitude, he is fair and balanced, he has impeccable integrity and honesty, he is a professional and well-respected by his peers, his supervisors, and the public. And finally, Officer Gifford was recognized for his traffic safety and enforcement activities. Even though he's been busy involved with all this training, he still did an outstanding job in this year, and what really stood out in his traffic safety is while assigned to day shift, Officer Sir Gifford arrested ten individuals for DWI, which is an unprecedented high number for a day shift officer. So it is with great privilege that I present the 2012 Richfield Police Officer Year to Officer Drew Gifford. And just, just a final note, Officer Gifford's name will be placed on a plaque that is hung in the lobby of the Police Department, and he gets the recognition, we filled up our previous plaque, this program started in 1994, so he gets the privilege of being the first officer on our new plaque that will hang next to the existing plaque, so, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. We have another presentation by the Three Rivers Park District Representatives, and I believe we have John Gunyou and John Gibbs here.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to note that John Gunyou is the Chair of the Three Rivers Park District.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, what a tough act to follow.
Yeah.
I feel like I should have something more to offer rather than talk about parks and trails, but I, I wanted to thank you for the opportunities tonight, it's, uh, the two John Gs on the Three Rivers Board are here tonight, it's a little confusing, but the other John G is taller than I am, so that's, I guess, the distinction. Uh, Richfield is, uh, very well represented on Three Rivers, uh, as, as Councilmember Garcia mentioned, I'm, I'm the Chair, John chairs our, basically our Projects Committee, so all of our investments, uh, uh, the decisions and all that are made through his committee, so, in terms of representation, uh, since we both represent parts of Richfield, this is a, um, uh, you're, you're well-served, I guess is what I'd say. Uh, we wanted to take just a few minutes tonight to just introduce ourselves, and also talk a little bit about Three Rivers, and we appreciate the opportunity to do that. Uh, I was gonna talk a little more in general about kind of who we are, and some of the programs and things we have going on, John was then just gonna talk about, uh, some of the projects that we have, uh, currently going on that would, and in the books, uh, in the planning stages also, that would, uh, would benefit Richfield, so, um, with that, is do I, uh, is this the one that I just pushed?
We'll get somebody who's familiar with that to give you a quick hand with that, John.
Oh, that one? Oh, there we go.
Are you doing it, or am I doing it?
Oh, let me see. Oh, okay, thanks.
Um, a lot of folks don't, don't, uh, realize that we're a very large park district, and basically, it's the, the large parks and the, and the large acreage that we have in a natural resources-based system, it's, uh, as we developed over the years, it was initially, initially Hennepin Parks, which was really formed to preserve large, uh, large ecologically sensitive areas, and, and then, uh, for the long term, and then make that available for, for use for the, for our, for our public. Uh, we have, uh, over the years evolved, obviously, and in fact, our name has changed as we became, uh, more of a, a regional agency, uh, we have twenty-two parks now, with twenty-seven thousand acres, which is a fairly significant, uh, significant responsibility. The districts, uh, this is the district that I represent, you can see it stretches from Richfield, uh, all the way to Shorewood, um, I, I represent about three-fourths of Richfield, uh, John, uh, then represents, uh, the remaining part of Richfield, the, the lower, uh, southeastern portion of that, and then also the cities of Eden Prairie and, and Bloomington. We have, uh, probably first and foremost, a big part of, of who we are is this environmental stewardship, uh, we, uh, take that, that charge seriously in terms of maintaining and preserving and restoring the, the lakes and creeks and forests that make our, our communities all very special. Uh, we have what we call, uh, park reserves, which are our, our large parks, I guess would I'd say, so it's, uh, uh, oftentimes people are not familiar with the fact that, for example, Highland, which are very close to here, obviously, uh, Highland is about a thousand acres, uh, most people think of it in terms of just the ski area, but, uh, there, uh, there's a large nature center, if you've ever visited that, as well as the, uh, the major, uh, preserved areas. Uh, we follow a policy that we call our eighty-twenty policy, which is that twenty percent, up to twenty percent of these large reserves can be used for educational and recreational purposes, the rest we, we maintain in perpetuity. Uh, we also have, uh, the big parks, the regional parks, so it's everything from, uh, well, you can read the list as well as I can, and the numbers that, uh, number of our residents, you know, Bryant Lake, some of those that are probably closer, that, uh, folks would, would use in this area, which, uh, variety of activity. I've actually discovered as being on the board, there's, uh, you know, people will say, "Oh, no, Three Rivers, what's that?" And I, I said, "Where do you live?" And I said, uh, I said, "Well, that's a French park." And they go, "Oh, that's yours?" And so it's, it's one of those kind of recognition that we, uh, we're not as sort of, I guess, visible as a lot of organizations. Uh, we also have a number of special recreation facilities that are very unique, I mean, we have a, we have an operating farm that raises livestock and crops that we use for education purposes, it's not just that we, you know, operate a farm, but, we have, you can see, we have a lot of kids groups go through there, uh, everything from formal gardens to historical, the landing down in Chocopee, where we, uh, there's a periodic, uh, well, period pieces, I guess, where people dress up, and, uh, I, I as a carpenter myself, I, I've always, uh, liked to visit where they, some of the old tools that they actually sit and do this, and they stay in character, so it's a little hard to talk to them about, uh, you know, "It's a lot handier than my power saw, oh, what's that?" You know, that you're talking about, but. Uh, we also are probably better known, especially in, in, in Richfield, for our regional trails, uh, that's a, a, a major function of what we are, it's not just the parks and the, and the preserves, but we have sixteen regional trails that represent about half of the regional trails in the whole metro area are maintained and operated by Three Rivers. It's, uh, heavily biking is the use of those trails, and John was gonna talk a little bit about the trails that are near and dear to Richfield's heart, because it's, uh, as you can see, uh, just to kind of in that area, there's a, this is a major, the Nine Mile Creek Trail is a major link with, uh, in that whole network, and especially the southern part of, of suburban Hennepin. It's interesting in that little sort of confluence of about five trails there is, uh, near the depot in, uh, Ri- in Hopkins, which is, uh, you wouldn't think of that as sort of the center of, the hub of the, you know, the trail system in the southern part of the county, but it's a, it's a major, and sort of the Nine Mile is a major connection there. You can see the volumes we're talking about, it's, uh, you know, the Cedar Lake Trails are half a million people a year use those, uh, we really expect Nine Mile to sort of join those ranks too, when, when it's complete, but you can see the, the volume that, uh, we're, we're dealing with there, uh, and that's one of the challenges we face, and this is, it's, uh, no secret or no surprise to any of you, I realize I'm preaching a little to the choir about the challenges of local regional government, is, uh, we have our, demand is going up, and at the same time, our, our resources and, uh, are, are not growing as fast. You can see just the usage that we're dealing with is, has doubled in the last six years, about ten percent a year, uh, a large part of that is the, is the trail usage, and it's, uh, it's really a function of, uh, our aging population, I mean, it's the same demographics that you're dealing with, is how do we, how do we keep up with that, I, I'm, I'm sort of the example of one, my, at some point, my kid said, "Dad, you, you really need to think about age-appropriate sports here, because you're getting injured every weekend when you play, you know, when you're on the soccer field," or something like that, so, as I've turned to the trails, that's what everyone else that's as gray as I am is kind of doing the same thing, so we're seeing a big demand for that. What that really means is that we need to be, uh, ever more innovative and creative, and I think the example we have here with, with you all is a, is a good example of that, of working together. I wanted to talk about two program areas that we're, that we're, uh, looking at doing, trying to do more with, uh, 'cause I think it'll have a, a major bearing on, on Richfield, excuse me, one of our, uh, hallmarks of our mission is to connect people with nature. Now, what that, uh, typically means is we like people to come out to our nature centers and, you know, meet with our educators there, and go through those programs and all that, excuse me. Uh, one of the challenges we have is that most of our parks and those facilities are in the ex-urban areas, so, uh, the first-tier suburbs, uh, the first-tier cities are, that, uh, I largely represent, and, and John, uh, don't have those facilities as easily accept, as accessible, so one of the things we're looking at is how do we, uh, how do we bring our nature to, to those areas that don't have the large parks that are, you know, within, within five miles? Um, a number of the things, the other thing is we're focusing on is, uh, kids and seniors is the, where the discussions are going, 'cause we, we think that makes, uh, probably the area we need to do a little more, uh, so what does that mean? Well, uh, we've started to have some conversations with, um, uh, those that we're doing things with now to say, "What can we do more? Uh, what's working, what isn't working?" Uh, we're starting to brainstorm with some of those things, uh, example is, uh, you know, we have community centers, uh, throughout, uh, the, the first-tier suburbs, that, uh, would it make sense for us to bring some of our educators to those areas, to, to have programs that seniors are invited to, or even kids maybe do this more in schools, so rather than have, uh, going the other way for anything. Uh, senior, uh, housing and kind of those areas, we also think is an area we need to look at maybe doing more than we already do there, uh, you know, does it make sense to have one of our educators bring an owl out to a senior housing facility and, and talk about that? Um, that's one of the areas that people are telling us that, uh, seniors are more interested in, I sort of, uh, I'm, I qualify for, uh, for Medicare this year, so, uh, that's, I could count myself in one of those, but it's, uh, both the, I say very active seniors is those are the ones that are maybe not as mobile, as to how do we, how do we do a better job of serving those people? So, um, uh, the two areas that we're hearing people are most interested in are that kind of, uh, continuing education, lifelong learning, and natural resources and environmental things, as well as history, so we have, uh, you know, we have a, a history, uh, function of our education too, we think we can do there. Um, we have, I just wanted to give you one example, we, we got a grant for one program that's called the Adventure Book Club, and it's a, it's a collaboration between the Ridgedale Library, the Hopkins Minnetonka, uh, Recreation Department, and Three Rivers, and what it is, it's, uh, it would be, it, it's, it will be a book club that, let's say they, uh, maybe read a historical novel about canoeing, and then they'll take a canoe trip, so it's something that we're, we would be actively engaged in getting people, uh, used to the sort of programs we do. Also trying to do maybe a, a little more expanded effort with our school systems, we, we have, uh, at least a couple dozen educators on staff that do a lot of our training, but, um, and we've actually developed curriculum for that, uh, something that not a lot of people know, we, we do some work in some school districts, we think maybe a little better, uh, effort with, uh, with educators, to make them aware that this is the sort of programming that we have available, that they could either use or incorporate our use with that. Uh, our educators actually helped develop the, the statewide, uh, graduation standards for, for science, natural resources pieces, so we, we think that's a, one of those things where probably people don't know is available, and we, we think we can do more. Uh, the other area that, uh, we think just from a programming standpoint, is, uh, our mission to, well, we, we call it inspiring people to recreate, and I, this little graph here just shows the challenge that we all have, I think, is that the obesity rates have just, uh, tr- uh, skyrocketed among our children. Um, those of us that are now becoming boomers are, sort of have that same problem of being a little more sedentary, so, how can we, uh, how can we do a little better outreach into the communities to, to address that and be a partner in that? Some of the things that we're, we're doing, um, and these are just sort of working titles, but just some of the things that our, our, our staff is working on now, uh, we just call it the Active Kids Sampler, so kind of the idea would be, and, and these would be focused again on the first-tier suburbs, so, um, probably something in maybe the Robinsdale area, maybe something in the Hopkins area, Richfield, I think is a possibility, um, where we would, uh, take a day and, uh, bring a lot of our things in, working with the local recreation department, so it'd be climbing wall, slack line, uh, archery, those sorts of things that would be sort of publicized to get people, you know, kids interested in, in doing those sort of programs, uh, maybe, I, we call it, I call it Boomers and Beyond, kind of the same, same sort of idea. One of the things we've, we've, we started talking about was the fact that many local recreation departments don't have kind of the specialized instruction available. I, I was talking with one recreation department, they said, "You know, we have a lot of facilities, and we have some programs, but, you know, we don't, we, we can't really offer, um, things like, uh, snowshoeing and cross-country skiing, and, uh, canoeing, kayaking, and that," and I said, "Well, we have instructors like that," so, I mean, that's something maybe we can do in your community, in order to, you know, sort of, again, sort of bringing our services to those areas that are not near the larger parks. Community events too, I think, I was talking earlier with, with Tom about the, uh, last, I, I lived for many years, uh, in South Minneapolis, just a couple, a few blocks north of 62, and, uh, which he pointed out at one time that would have been Richfield, but, uh, I don't quite go back that far, but, um, so the hub area in Penn is a area that we always frequented, and I went to Pennfest in this last year, and I, I said, "You know, those sort of events, I think we can have more of a presence to just make sure people are aware of what we do." Um, let me then turn it over to John, and he's gonna talk about some of the projects that are near and dear to Richfield's heart. Great, thank you, Mayor Protam and, and members, uh, you can count on Gibbs and Gunyou to come here and tell you how well we represent you, which is, but, uh, I think the best thing I can do is try to be brief and get right to it here, just wanted to highlight a couple of the programs we've been working on, projects we've been working on, here in Richfield, which I think, um, we all ought to be very proud of, and, and thank you for your, for your support. The first is this intercity, intercity regional trail, and that's a bicycle trail that is going to connect the Minneapolis Grand Rounds from about Lake Nacomis down in through Bloomington. And so we're gonna start construction in the spring of 2014, will be done by the fall of 2015. Total of five point one miles, total cost of seven point five million dollars, and the Richfield segment, uh, that portion is basically a two and a half million dollar project, uh, basically, rough justice goes down Cedar, um, and it ultimately connects with the Nine Mile Trail and at Seventy-Sixth Street, which we'll talk about in a second. So the two and a half million dollar Richfield stretch, so to speak, is paid for by about a million and a half dollars of federal grants, and thank you for everybody who worked on making that happen, and another nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars contributed by the Three Rivers Park District, um, so it should be a great value for Richfield, and it should be a critical link to really bringing Minneapolis, Bloomington, Richfield into this broader system, so we're very excited about that one. And the second one, I don't know how to run this thing, but we'll just guess, huh? Oh, well. I don't know what I did, but, um, the second is the Nine Mile Creek Trail, and that starts where roughly the inner-city trail breaks off, and, uh, that's the one that we've largely got pieces done along Seventy-Sixth Street, and I hope everybody's tried it out, I have, it's wonderful, um, but it will be part of fifteen miles, basically, of a Richfield Edina Minnetonka Trail that links up to the Hopkins Crosstown area that, that John mentioned, so that Richfield segment is three point seven miles, roughly two million dollars from the Metropolitan Council's processed funds, so to speak, and, and the city worked very nicely to make that happen, along with one point one million dollars of Three Rivers funds, and that is, uh, gonna connect up with this Nine Mile Creek Trail that has two pieces to it, the eastern and western piece, we're gonna get going very soon on the eastern Edina piece of it, and John and I are working hard to try to accelerate the western piece as well, so that within a few years, we're hoping to have the whole thing done, and we're definitely gonna get going on it, um, uh, this next year. So those were the two big Richfield projects that I thought we'd just bring to the fore and thank everybody that's worked on them, and Steve, I know a lot of your staff has helped a, a great deal, and, and our Three Rivers staff, and a bunch of other folks, and it's, uh, gonna be usable pretty soon, because I noticed it was melting pretty good the last couple days, so. We're very open to questions, the last slide, if we could get there, is that we've got phone numbers, we promise not to be strangers, hope you won't either, John and I are both new to representing Richfield, John was elected for the first time here in this November election, I, um, was elected two years ago in a district that did not include Richfield, we redistricted, and although I was running unopposed, I was actually on the ballot here in the southeastern corner, and, and I'm just delighted to be able to represent my hometown, uh, having, uh, lived the first twelve years or so of my life at Seventy-Third and Upton, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, um, questions up here? I had one, I, I want, I'm guessing, but I never really asked, are the Three Rivers, the Crow River, the Mississippi River, and the Minnesota River, is that the area?
Perfect, you are good.
Okay, all right. And then the other thing, um, just, I'm sure you know, but we obviously in Richfield have a very unique, um, nature center, Woodlake Nature Center, and maybe at some point we could somehow collaborate with your group as well, to expand both of our efforts.
Funny you should, uh, raise that, yeah, we, we would love to do more of that, in fact, we, one of our commissioners, uh, raised it at our Long Range Strategic Planning Committee meeting, I think it was the first week of February, that, uh, what are we doing to pull Woodlake into the whole effort? So, we're all ears and we're open for that, yeah.
That'd be great. And then I guess I had one other comment, and then I maybe see one out here, um, and that is that we do have, um, you've mentioned it already, in fact, the Pennfest, and the Nine Mile Creek Trail crosses Pennfest, we wanted you to be there and be a presence, you know, we think that's a really great asset to our community, and we're looking for something spectacular at that end of our Pennfest, so, put your, put your thinking caps on.
Maybe it's a bicycle parade.
There we go. So, did I see a hand out here? Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Well, good, thank you so much for coming, very informative. All right, number four, a presentation by Augsburg Park Library, and, is, are you Pat? And I'm gonna let you pronounce your last name for us, Pat.
All right, I'm not exactly sure how to get this down. Hello, my name is Pat Paulanuke.
Thank you, Paulanuke.
Think of it as Paulanuke, um, and I'm the new senior at Augsburg Park Library, and I wanna thank the members of the council for letting me come this evening and tell you about a very wonderful, exciting new project that's happening at Augsburg Park Library. Um, as you know, Hennepin County is really committed to serving people of all ages, and Augsburg Park Library is definitely committed to serving people of, of all ages. We believe the library, along with the support of community partners, plays a really important role in early learning of young children, and ensuring that they enter kindergarten ready to learn. We recognize that parents and other loving family members are really the child's first teacher, and they're, and really the best- and really the best teacher, and that the library staff is dedicated to supporting them as they prepare children for success. Playing is how kids learn. Playing helps kids use imagination to solve problems. It also helps them learn to work with others and prepares them to learn to read. We are committed to creating spaces in libraries where children and caregivers can talk, sing, read, and play and write together. The library is working with the Children's Museum, the Minnesota Children's Museum, to create a dedicated space for children and their families to engage in learning and intentional play at the library. As part of a larger renovation, this family play and learn spa will include opportunities for families to sing, talk, read, and play together. It is scheduled to open in the fall of 2013, and that's why I'm here today. We really want the community to engage in a meeting about this space. This exciting new space will be designed to reflect and celebrate the unique character of the Richfield community. We need your thoughts and ideas of how to make sure that this space will reflect the community the library serves. We are having a community engagement meeting on April the 8th at 6:00. So I encourage you to make sure that you tell your friends, your neighbors, and the community to come out and please help us to decide how this space will look for the Richfield community. There will be actually a poster board at the library talking about this new space. We are asking four questions of the community to help us design the new space, and those questions are, "What does early learning mean to you?" "How can we represent our Richfield community in this new space?" Landmarks, events, activities, traditions. "What is at the heart of Richfield? What makes you proud of your community? What will it mean for our Richfield community to have this new library space as a resource for families?" So I welcome you all to attend the meeting if you can. We really want your input, and I thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to tell you about it tonight. So if you need to contact me, I can leave you one of my cards. Please contact anybody at the library. They'd be glad to also give you more information if you need to have it.
You know, I wanted to thank Augsburg, because they have been all around the community soliciting input. And I think that's important, because if we take our kids to, you know, on these little field trips to places around our community, I think it just makes them a lot more proud.
Absolutely. And you know, Augsburg Park is a very diverse community, which is really wonderful. And we hope our library will reflect some of that diversity with our Somali and our Latino community, our Vietnamese community. I mean, I think that that's one of the really unique things about Augsburg Park Library as well, and this community.
And it's fun to go to the library and just, you know, just watch the kids.
It will even be more fun, and it gives adults, you know, the opportunity to play. It says, "Hey, it's okay to play. You can play, too." And we want you to be there in that space with your family. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Next council discussion item is hats off to hometown hits. I'll start with Tom.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All I really wanted to mention is, I think the city did an awesome job of snow plowing, even though it was kind of a continuous event. They came through first and got things cleaned up, and I know they had to come back afterwards. And I think there was some confusion by the residents, but I think they need to understand that if it's continuously snowing, don't park on the streets. Because I had some calls that said, "Well, the streets were plowed once," and I said, "Yeah, but it didn't stop. We got another two inches," and it was forecasted that way. So if it occurs again, just a reminder, if we plow because it's advantageous to the citizens getting around, and the snow ain't done, and it's going to snow again, we're going to be back doing it again. So please keep your cars off the straight street. I want to, like I said, give a hats off to the police department. I know they were busy that night trying to get things through and that. And from what I heard, for the most part, we did a great job, as we always do.
The only complaint I heard was from a teacher who said she didn't get her classes canceled the following day. She had to go to school, along with her kids. Edwina?
Okay. I've been working with some partners on this children and adolescent mental health forum. And we're trying to get partners, like, of course, our own Health Advisory Board or Commission, NAMI, Richfield Bloomington, or Bloomington-Richfield Public Health, Adler Graduate School, Headway Emotional Behavior Service, Frazier, and the National Organization of National, what's NAMI? National Alliance for Mental Health, the Minnesota chapter, and School District 287. Really, mental health, and when we're talking, I think we ought to really know that it's such an important issue. I attended a forum in Shaska this past Saturday. It was just so informative, and it was just really heartbreaking. It's a very important issue. It touches a lot of families. It touches a lot of friends. It touches a lot of people at work. And if anyone, and I'm thinking that this will probably happen the end of May or the beginning of June, if anyone is interested in being part of this, please give me a call. And the city's got my phone number. Just give Cheryl a call, and she'll give you my number, because we really need to make sure that we can make something happen. And then number two, I only have a short list, seven things. I'm just kidding.
We'll let you do two, and then we'll move along and come back. How's that?
I'm just kidding. I couldn't help it. I wanted to thank, you know, our city manager, because I know he wrote to a couple of legislators, and, you know, really trying to make sure that Richfield is heard, that Richfield's represented, and that Richfield, and I know, maybe you can talk about it when you do your report. But I was really impressed that, you know, that he did that letter, and it was just well-written, and it really spelled out exactly why Richfield needed, what it needed, and the benefits to it, and the benefits naturally to the region. So appreciate that, Mr. Devich.
Okay. Pat?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. This kind of ties in with Tom's comments on the snow plowing. I got a call late last week from a gentleman, and it was an interesting call. He spent the first five minutes saying, "I want you to know that I don't criticize anything about the city in terms of plowing and cleaning the sidewalks and everything." But he said, "I'm 80 years old, and the little tracks that they use to clean the sidewalks takes the fire hydrant at the end of my block and just packs it in." And he said, "I've been out there for two and a half hours trying to clean it out, and I'm at the end. I can't do it anymore." So he was asking for some help. I guess the point is, is we got it cleared out and everything. But it was an incredible phone call. This gentleman was saying, because he pays attention to pride in the community and what he can do to help the fire department and everything, and he was out there working two hours to clear it out. And he said at 80, he says, "You know, I'm getting real close to the end." But I just saw, and, but he was so careful to say, "We do such a wonderful job in keeping the streets clear and keeping the sidewalk clear, and at my age, that's appreciated. I can return that appreciation by cleaning it out, but this one was just a little too tough." So it was, I think, and I pass that on to the city manager and also to Mike Easely, because to me, it emphasizes what most of our citizens are all about. It's not asking for help. It's going out and doing what they can, and that's really cool. Another thing, and I was out of town the last couple of days, and I happened to saw, and I know that the Richfield Girls High School basketball team's going to state again. They play Hill Murray, who I'm not going to jinx them by saying they've beaten them twice already this year, but hopefully they'll get a third time. It's 10:00 in the morning. The only thing, somebody help me on this. It's either Wednesday or Thursday morning, and I was out of town, and I don't know which. 10:00 Wednesday morning? Okay. So, and it's over at Williams Arena over on the campus, so if you can get there and support that team, that'd be great. Third thing is, Dave Gepner and Tom Rubline, the architects, and Gordon Hanson, the architects behind Penn Central, are reinitiating the 7:30 breakfast the third Thursday over at Silver Spoon. So this coming Thursday is the first one to, once again, start working on open streets and try to put a real, real great plan together. So if you want to participate, you want to find out what it's about, stop at Silver Spoon, 7:30 Thursday morning, and I guarantee you we can find something for you to do.
Thank you. All right. Next item is approval of the agenda, and we've had a request to remove item H. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Devich to read our, or, excuse me, we'll call for approval of the calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the agenda removing item H, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and that will be at number 8A. Now, Mr. Devich, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. The next item we're going to look at is the consent calendar. For those in the audience, both here and at home, the consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on those items is necessary. Tonight, we have several items on the consent calendar, with the exception of item H, which has been removed. Item A is consideration of approval of a resolution amending the 2012 general fund budget by authorizing of a transfer of appropriations from the Administrative Services Department to the Public Works Department. Item B is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the Fire Station 2 renovation capital project fund. Item C is consideration of approval of the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a HUD amendment to the regulatory agreement with respect to the Linwood Partners LLC project and granting approval for certain other actions with respect thereto. Item D is consideration of approval of a request for funding for the Fourth of July Committee's 2013 celebration in the amount of $8,917 to make up for the lost income from what they would have gotten from the carnival. Item E is consideration of approval of the purchase orders to Midway Ford Commercial for two new Ford pickup trucks for public safety in the amount of $52,187.84 plus tax and license. Item F is consideration of approval of the first reading of a transitory ordinance for the Taft Lake Water Quality Improvement Plan, authorizing engineering services at an estimated cost of $225,000, and construction at an estimated cost of $3 million, and scheduling a public hearing and second reading for April 9, 2013. Item G is consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending subsection 544.13, subdivision 3 of the city code related to parking lot design requirements. And item I, consideration of approval of the resolution granting a three-year interim use permit to allow the continued use of 6529 Penn Avenue, which is the car hop business for used car sales. And that would conclude tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve all of the items with the exception of H?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item H, and that would be 8A. Edwina, would you like to bring that one up?
I don't know if the staff wants, do you want to?
I would ask Mayor Protem, John Stark had just run upstairs to the office. I wonder if we could just hold that for a second till John gets back, and he can address all the questions that we have on that? If you perhaps want to move ahead to the next item?
Sure. We can move on to number nine then. With the consent of the group up here? Okay. Item number nine, and I believe Mr. Elliott is taking that one.
Thought I had number 10, Your Honor. But nine's fine. Item number nine is the public hearing and second reading of transitory ordinance providing funding for certain capital improvements from the special revenue fund. At the December 11, 2012 city council meeting, the city council authorized $450,000 of special revenue funds for improvements to several city capital improvements in 2013. At the February 12, 2013 city council meeting, the city council approved the first reading providing for the expenditure of funds from the special revenue fund for certain capital improvements. The planned expenditures are as follows: $103,800 for outdoor pool renovation loan repayment, $50,000 for major park maintenance projects, $92,600 Lincoln Field internal loan repayment, $30,000 Taft Lake fishery, $65,000 ice arena rank one bleachers and railings, $54,000 ice arena skate tile, $24,600 outdoor pool painting, $20,000 pool floatable, and $10,000 community garden relocation. In addition, the Type 1 skate park project, which was initially included in the 2010 capital improvement budget plan with special revenue funding of $70,000, was completed in 2012. The project received final approval to proceed from the city council at the April 10, 2012 city council meeting with an estimated cost of $110,933. Additional funding to cover the increased project costs was to be provided by using unexpendited park maintenance special revenue funds. Due to cost saving realized during construction, the final period project cost was only $83,938. Despite the savings realized on the construction costs, there remains a funding gap of approximately $13,824. Within the park maintenance capital project fund, which is funded on an annual basis with special revenue funds, there's a residual balance of assets due to cost savings on projects within this fund. Therefore, staff is recommending that $13,824 of these residual assets be redirected by ordinance to fund the gap within the Type 1 skate park project. The 2012 capital improvement budget also provides for expenditures for all types of funds contained in the budget, including municipal state aid, user fees, federal grants, and state grants. Authorization by ordinance is not required for expenditures other than special revenues. With that being said, at this time, I would move to open a public hearing regarding the second reading of the transitory ordinance providing funding for certain capital improvements from the special revenue fund.
Okay. We have a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this matter? Anyone wish to come forward and speak? Is there a motion to close?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
With the closing of the public hearing, I would at this time move to approve the second reading of the transitory ordinance providing for the expenditure of funds from the special revenue fund for certain capital improvements.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a second. Any discussion? I just had a curiosity question. As long as Mr. Toppets offers here, maybe he can answer it for me. We're repaying a renovation loan for the outdoor pool and also for the Lincoln Field improvements. Do we know how many, roughly, how many payments are left on those items?
Sure do. This year will be the last payment for the pool, so the pool will be completely paid off. And there are three future payments for Lincoln at about $92,000 each that will pay off that loan next three years.
Great. Any further discussion or question? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And now we have Mr. Stark back, so we will move back to item 8A, which was H under the consent calendar. Okay.
Yes, Mayor Protem and council members, this is an application for a site plan amendment for an adult daycare at 6630 Penn Avenue. Yeah, I'm not going to go into all the details. I think that one of the questions, though, that had come out was why 29? And my understanding is that the owner of the adult daycare business had consulted with our fire chief to determine maximum load occupancy of the building, and that was 29. And then from that, city planner Melissa Pellman made a determination of whether there were adequate parking spaces for 29 people in the adult daycare, and there were. And that's the basis on which the planning commission approved it. The owner of the business, Mr. Juan Gao, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, is here, and he could probably provide you some more insight. I do believe that the clients of the adult daycare are all, are not in need of medical attention. It's more of a social aspect where people could come, you know, during the day, seen. Seniors could come during the day and, you know, play cards or participate in other activities. They also plan on having a small bus to provide day trips to people there. So whether they will actually have 29, he would have to answer that. But that was, that's what the occupancy load and the parking would support. For us to do anything less than that amount, I think we would have to come up with some rationale for why a lesser amount would make some sense.
Well, my question, Mr. Stark, because I went to that site this afternoon, and it seemed like to me when, when I went to the alley and I counted the spaces, you could park three cars, it seemed like, well, the fourth car would have been kind of a tight fit. And then the fifth stall, there was so much snow there that you wouldn't even attempt it. So I think we have to look at, you know, can we park in the, in the wintertime? And then the other thing, too, is in the, in the front of the store, you know, if, you can just look at the picture and see the huge mounds of snow there, too. How are people, if they're bussed in there, how are they going to come in through the front or the back? And how are they going to navigate their way, you know, to, in, into the building and, and out of the building to get back on the bus again?
Yes.
And where will that bus be parked afterwards?
Okay, just a few things. One is, in the back, you know, we did dimension out the parking spaces, and they, they do meet our criteria. They're nine by 19. There are five of them in the back. And that's the striped portion of the parking spaces. There's actually an additional 10 feet or so behind the spaces that, before you hit the alley property line. So a bus would have approximately 24 feet in length to park in one of those spaces. In terms of the...
Excuse me, are you talking about the, the five spaces?
Yes.
Okay, so a bus could park there?
In one of those.
Okay.
In terms of the, the front and the snow removal and those kinds of things, you know, that's something that the, the owner of the business would have to attend to, to make sure that his clients could get in and out. Again, he's here, and he might be able to address that.
Okay. Would you like to come up and answer the questions? And if you would first state your name and address, and then when you're done speaking, if you could sign in, please?
My name is Juan Gao. My address is 6630 Penn Avenue. Regarding to the front, the, the, the snow, I think the city take care of the, you know, it's part of a street. And for us, if it's necessary, we do clean that today, you know, because, you know, it's, it's not possible for the city to clean right away. So we basically clean up and put a little passway for the people to get off the car on, on street parking, get into the building. And if that's a problem, we're going to clean more of that section. By probably working with the city to make sure where we can dispose the snow.
What I wanted to know is, let's say a client comes and, and is left off by, by their significant other or, or their son or daughter, and left out in the front, will they be able to get inside the building? See, I'm not worried about the summertime or any other time. But when you have all that snow, you've got to make sure that it's clean so that that can be done.
Yes, we'll make sure that snow is cleaned, and also we'll make sure that the, our client can safely get into our building. I mean, of course, we don't want anybody got injured or anything, so we'll take great care of that. And also, our plan was to drop off, provide the transportation, and we'll drop off the client in the front and then park the bus in the end, in the back of the building.
How many employees will you have?
The regulation is a five per, actually eight, eight client per, per caretaker.
Okay, so you've got five in the back and...
Two in the front.
Two in the front?
Yeah.
So that's seven.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I'm just kind of, you know. And you don't know whether you're going to have 29. You can maybe have even less than 29, right?
We hope we got to 29. I mean, there's a lot of things that we, we consider. I mean, it's not possible for us to, definitely, I don't, we don't expect to have 29 right away. Probably one year, two year, could be three years. Initially, we considered to start small, and then we work out some plan, you know, we, we just, you know, this is 29, just the maximum number of people can be located in the building. That's more like you go to a restaurant, you know, there's a maximum number of people can go into that building. That's the same thing. It's not necessary, we already have 29 people lined up to come to our place.
Have you started to work with the State Department of Human Services?
Yes.
Okay.
We have started. There are a lot of process and procedure for us to go through. And I just want to reassure you that, you know, of course, the safety is our, you know, biggest, you know, we'll take that very highly as well.
Okay, and so, I mean, I would imagine that you'd have to do a lot inside the building, right? To conform to what they, the standards they require?
Yes, there are a couple of modifications we have to do. For example, adding additional handicapped bathroom to the building, and those kind of things are part of the remodeling. So this is just the first step to get approval, and then we can start the remodeling of the building.
Okay.
When do you expect, expect or hope to open?
I'm thinking about is probably in two months. Because once we got the approval from the city, and then there's approval from the Department of Human Services, before they, we can get the license, we'll have a site visit, and also taking into the consideration of the remodeling. So we were thinking about, about two months.
And, you know, when you enter through the, through the back, do you enter right into the building? Or do you have to climb stairs or?
There's a couple flights, stairs, yeah, going up to, upstairs.
Are you going to maybe build a ramp?
Like I said, the...
Assuming, because a lot of these folks may be on wheelchairs.
I, I think it's the majority of them, they are not. But our plan is to drop off the clients in the front of the building, not from the, in the back. But we'll park the bus in the back, because we have a lot of parking spots there, and it's much bigger than the on-street parking. So we just kind of, in the morning, drop them off, and then, you know, park the bus in the back of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
And so just to clarify, the clients wouldn't be driving themselves to the location? You'd be going out every morning and picking them up and bringing them in?
We provide the transportation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the attached resolution granting the site plan approval for daycare serving up to 29 people at 6630 Penn Avenue.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we have completed...
Now we're on 10.
Nine, so number 10 is...
I believe I'm on deck.
Tom's on deck.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Item, excuse me, item number 10 is the second reading consideration of an amendment to the City Administrative Code, Chapter 3, Section 310.07, Sub 5, describing background investigations. Since this is a second reading, I'll just kind of do an overview. But what this is all about is we have to pass a new administrative code to come in compliance with the Bureau of Criminal Apprehensions requirements so that we do background checks. The amended BCA regulations include provisions that written consent is required and that the hiring authority will keep the results of the background checks. The proposed amendment changes incorporate these new requirements. The new language defines the purpose of conducting background investigations along with provisions relating to who on staff will keep the information on file, what type of consent form should be filed, and the recommended changes ensure city compliance with the BCA regulations. So I'd like to, by motion, approve the second reading of the proposed ordinance amendment to the City Administrative Code, Chapter 3, Subsection 310.07, Subdivision 5, describing background investigations.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And Edwina, you have the item number 11.
Okay, this is also a public hearing, isn't it? Yeah, it is.
First reading.
First reading of an ordinance, rezoning properties located at 6330 and 6400 Lindell Avenue from general commercial and planned general commercial to planned mixed-use and single-family residential. The Lindell Garden site has been vacant since the store closed in 2006. And since that time, there's been a lot of vandalism and, once in a while, some criminal activity. The property is located in what the comprehensive plan calls the city's downtown area. This city center is intended to include a mix of residential, shopping, recreational, and business uses. The current proposed planned unit development is divided into two primary sections for which two separate developers will apply for approval. So that's a change from the original concept of this, of this plan. The current request involves rezoning of all land involved in the project in the specific land use proposal for the northern portion of the site. Consideration of these approvals depend on an understanding of the agreements that will be in place between the two site halves and the coordination between this northern portion of the site and the future development of the south portion. And the Cornerstone Group is proposing a mixed-use development that includes 151-unit, six-story apartment buildings, building, 11,600 square feet for a restaurant, retail space, and public amenities, and proposed lakeside amenities, which include performance space, built-in seating, new connections to the Richfield Lake walking path, an outdoor pizza oven, and other things. The development will also include the, what do you call it?
Farmers.
The farmer's market on Wednesday. Thank you, I lost my, my way here. The farmer's market on Wednesday. And the development will be built, and it will coordinate and share parking with the future Lake Winds Natural Foods Co-op in the south half of the site. So, let's see, the, okay. The rezoning of this requires first and second reading before the council. And so this is the first reading, and I don't know if staff wants to continue with the other.
And, and we do have Beth here from Cornerstone, if she'd like. I saw her with a big board. I'd like to see what's on her big board.
I think Mr. Stark wants to.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
You know, normally, a first reading is considered on the consent agenda. Due to the prominence of this project in, you know, what's our downtown area, we thought it was important to bring this first reading on the regular agenda. And the purpose is to introduce the concept to you and folks watching on TV, and to try to identify in advance any questions or issues you might have so that we can better address them at the, at the second reading. At that time, at the second reading, which is two weeks from tonight, the staff report will have a lot more detail in it about the parking and different things. Beth Pfeifer from the Cornerstone Group is here tonight to provide, you know, a brief introduction to the, the project.
If I may, while she's getting set up. I think it's also important that, John, maybe that you educate the public into why there's two developers now instead of one. We've, we've moved all along with Cornerstone being the primary mover. Now we're talking about a north and a south portion. We're talking about presumably a sale of it. I think one of the questions that's going to come up is there's a significant amount of money that's been given to Cornerstone to acquire the property, to clean it up. What happens with part of it being sold? Who benefits from that? Do we get any of the money back? There's questions like that. I think the constituency and the citizens out there probably have questions about and would be interested in knowing.
Sure, and those, again, that's the perfect reason for bringing this up tonight is so that we can understand what your questions are.
And that's, I just wanted to put it out there tonight so that we can, so we know that we get, get everything laid out so the citizens know about the acquisition of the southern half of the property, how that plays out, and what our role and the HRA's role is in the whole thing now, that we've got two developers that are trying to coordinate what they're doing with parking and everything. So it's, it's not more complicated, but there's more moving parts that I think we really need to educate the public on.
Yeah, the, the two developers are the Cornerstone Group. Originally, they had sought to do retail development on, on the southern portion of the property. In doing so, they identified a potential tenant, which was the Lake Winds Co-op. In further discussions with Lake Winds, I believe that the Cornerstone Group and Lake Winds came to the conclusion that Lake Winds wanted to own their own real estate. So that's the reason for the, the development being parceled off the way it is. In terms of, you know, the, the funding that was provided for the property, you know, the purposes of those funding, of that funding was to acquire, to do some cleanup of the site. And some of that funding, I think, would be pertinent regardless of, of who the ultimate developer is. You know, in terms of obligations for, you know, if there are defaults on the funds or defaults on the, on the development, we just need to look into that to see what those ramifications would be.
Well, I'm, I'm not so concerned about the obligations. I, and I don't, I don't have all the, the financials in front of me, but my recollection is there was $600,000, $650,000 contributed to the acquisition of the property, and additional funds for the cleanup. But my point is, is if that was to acquire the entire 10.3 acres, and now half of it's being sold, is there any, any compensation coming back to the city, or where does that go?
Yep, and that's a, that's something we haven't approached, so that's a good question.
Okay. So there will be some, some additional information, everything provided to both the city council and, and the citizens about how the whole financial thing is going to be worked out?
Yep.
All right.
Beth?
Thank you for having me tonight. We are always pleased to be before you, presenting the advancements in the designs for the development at the Garden Center. To get to Councilmember Elliott's first question about the change in ownership, I just want to echo what, what Mr. Stark said earlier about Lake Winds being the original tenant that we were speaking with for this project from day one, as being our anchor tenant for the site. And we worked with them for quite a while to try and make the existing building work to meet their needs. They're very interested in the site. They had a market study done that showed that Richfield is a great location for them, and they really wanted to be part of the vision of this project. It, it fits well with a natural food store, to be part of a place that is so focused on active living and healthy lifestyle. But ultimately, really, it wasn't working for them to, number one, use the shape of the existing building, and number two, they, they felt like they would be in a much better position to move forward if they were an owner of their own portion of the site. So just to echo what Mr. Stark said, we did talk with them about that and, and came before a joint session, work session with you and the HRA a few weeks ago to introduce that subject. And I think we'll be back before the HRA to talk about that again next week. As far as the development is concerned, we are still proposing a mixed-use development with a heavy, heavy emphasis on a town center at the project. The primary area of, of the town center is off of 64th through the middle of the site, culminating at the stage area in the center.
Beth, try to remember the mic.
Okay, I can't point and talk in the mic at the same time. So I'll just describe. All right. That's works. All right, so the main entry to the development is still on 64th Street. That's been the main entry to the Garden Center. What we're doing with Lake Winds is a back-to-back store so that no one has a backside facing any direction. So Lake Winds' primary parking field will be to the south. We will both have visibility and presence along the street. We know that an active and vibrant street edge is really important to the city, and we're working together on the design of that facade of the building to make sure that it will have windows, storefront look to it. And then we will be doing a retail liner piece that the Cornerstone... And then we will be doing a retail liner piece that the Cornerstone Group will own and manage. Again, a back-to-back situation where the property essentially runs through this hallway down here so that there's a front side to all sides of the building. We're working on attracting a restaurant to this corner of the building here, and the rest of the retail on our side will be likely a mix of neighborhood-scale retail, some office space, including our own office, which may be done as a co-working office space. What you see here is labeled as, you may not be able to read it on this scale, but open-air market is the future home of the farmer's market, which Mrs. Garcia mentioned in her introduction. We will be starting this summer to do the farmer's market in the parking lot, but that eventually will... That will eventually be covered parking, as you can see here, with a solar canopy array on the top. So you're seeing the corner of it here at the main entry. For the most of the week, this will just be covered parking for our retailers, but on Wednesdays from two to seven PM, it will house the farmer's market. We do own this solar canopy. It is on the roof of the existing building right now and will be moved to this location in the future.
So where will those, excuse me. Where, where will those people park? That were parking underneath there?
Part of our parking analysis that, I was, I wasn't quite as prepared to do a full presentation tonight, so you'll have to forgive me because I don't have the report in front of me. But part of our parking analysis considered the fact that during the farmer's market, those twenty stalls will not be available for retailers to park in. And part of the shared parking plan for the entire development shows that, demonstrates that there's enough parking onsite to accommodate that during those hours, especially being that we're looking at a Wednesday afternoon market, which is not a high-intensity time for the other businesses.
Okay.
This is also an opportunity that we're work, looking at incorporating a new bus shelter as part of that market pavilion, and also looking at potentially parking a shared car for the community in that location. That would be the community at large, not just our residents. So a couple of other pieces to that that we're looking into. Let's see, so what else can I tell you? Going back to the site plan. The housing then lines the north edge of the site, and we are planning one hundred and fifty-one units of housing. We're, these, these drawings are a work in progress, so you'll see them changing a little bit each time you see them, but this is the, this is the hot-off-the-press one literally was dropped off at my office an hour ago with some changes that we had asked for to make the materials a little bit warmer. As I said, it's still a work in process. But there is, at the main level overlooking the lake, two-story townhome-style units with four stories of housing above. There's a six-story building. There is a community room as part of this development that is about three times the size of a typical community room in a project that we would do. And that's very purposeful because this is intended to be a community room for our residence, residential community, and again, the community at large. This is a place where cooking demonstrations and classes could take place. It's a place where someone who wants to have a larger reception for an outdoor event could come and use the space. So the opportunity really to create this town center feeling for the city of Richfield that invites everyone to come in and use this space. And then... Kind of the main public areas of the project run through the center. And again, these are works in progress, so you will see them evolving and changing the drawings as we continue to refine the design. But a lot of outdoor area, a flat lawn space for recreation, pop jets of water and fountains for kids to play in. Our goal is to then flood this in the winter and be able to use it for ice skating. Tiered seating down towards the lake edge with a stage, which, actually, this is outdated. It would be a flat stage, not a raised stage. The outdoor pizza oven that was mentioned will be here. The restaurant that we're hoping to attract would have outdoor seating overlooking this area. And a new trail connection then that runs across here and connects to the existing trail, which is about a one-mile loop around Richfield Lake. What this drawing doesn't show is also edible gardens and working with ecological gardens who has done a lot of food demonstration projects to do some edible gardens onsite, which our residents would benefit from, maybe part of their rent package. So it's a lot of stuff going on.
Okay.
Hi, me.
Go ahead.
And this is half directed at you, Beth, and half at John. Given the fact that there's two developers and there's a fairly significant sharing of parking and everything, are they gonna, can we try to make sure they're on parallel tracks so we'll have both groups here when we talk to them about the shared parking and, and what happens? I know that, that Lake Winds, when, at the work session, indicated they expect a thousand to twelve-hundred visits a day. They've got, they've got a thou, I think, what, seventeen thousand members, and they expect to add significantly more. I'm, I just want to make sure we've got both developers here when we're talking about shared parking so that I understand exactly how it's going to work if, if, if Lake Winds has significant, if, if we're having, having events going on, whether it's a sale. I don't know if, if Whole Foods markets have sales or not, but I'm just wondering, you know, how, how we're going to massage that. So I think it's important that we have the opportunity to question Beth and, and, and the Lake Winds people at the same time so we make sure we understand how they're going to coordinate this if we've got multiple events going on at the same time.
Yep, we'll certainly request that that's the case, that the Lake Winds folks be here. We as staff had hoped that both applications could go forward simultaneously. The developers of the two parcels are a little bit off track with each other in terms of their, their timing and their planning, so that's not the case right now. What we've done is recommended that anything that happened on either of the sites be contingent on the approval of the other one.
Right.
So that, you know, one component of this couldn't go forward by itself. I understand what you're saying, and we'll make every effort to make sure that...
Yeah, well, and it's like, I, I don't want to, to hold Beth's feet to the fire on something that she may not be able to answer for. You know, I don't think that's fair to her.
We will certainly invite Dale Woodback from Lake Winds Natural Foods to be here two weeks from tonight when, when the public hearing is. I know he is planning to be here with me next week. Is it next week that we're, before the HRA? So he does have that on his calendar, and we are planning to be here next week. And I will invite him to be here in two weeks as well.
Edwina's going to have to carry my water because I won't be here in two weeks, so you're going to have to answer, ask the questions.
It's a burden, but okay, I'll, I'll handle it.
Edwina will be here instead of me in two weeks, so...
Okay.
But I will certainly invite Dale to be here as well. Obviously, they want this project to work for everyone. It's why they've, why they want to be an owner and not a tenant in it. And we have had many conversations about the need for shared parking, especially when events are going on, and that we would need during larger events to be able to share parking in their side of the lot. One of the things that we're committed to, and it was part of our discussion with staff, is that we really need to have parking management plans in place for all of, all events and directed traffic. We do not expect that during an event we will be able to handle, hopefully, high volumes of traffic because we want to be successful without a managed parking plan. So we did put together for staff review a number of different options of how that might work. You know, we are two years probably from having a summer event there, so we will button that down and get it closer before we actually are in progress. But there are a number of ways that we, we outlined that we could handle event parking, and we do think that that needs to be a directed plan. It was, it's something that we would need to hire traffic supervision for, whether it be through the city or independent.
Okay, great.
Tom?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just one question. You got the bike path right there around the lake. Are you going to encourage people to bike in for this event? And what kind of marketing or what are you going to do to park all these bikes?
Yes, very much. The bike parking isn't showing in any of these drawings, but we do have bike parking onsite, and we will make sure, I can kind of see it here, there's a big row of bike parking under a canopy overhang right there. But we will definitely encourage biking. We are all avid bikers in our office, and we definitely will encourage biking. I'm not a hundred percent sure how we will market that yet, but one of the options we've even looked at for event parking is the opportunity to use either the CenturyLink parking lot or the hub parking lot as a remote parking space and then have bike cabs available for people to come in or some of those four-person bikes that you ride in together. So we definitely want to make it fun and playful and, and make sure to incorporate cycling into this. That's important to us.
And you'll see in the packet in two weeks, like I said, when there's more detail to this, that staff is recommending approval for the developments, but not approval to conduct events onsite until a parking management plan has been approved. Because that, based on what we've seen from the parking studies, it appears that there's adequate parking for the development itself, except for those times when there are community events planned for the space. That's when there's some concern. Another thing to consider is staff is exploring with both the Cornerstone Group and other developers in the area, as well as with some of our regional partners, Met Council, the possibility of perhaps municipal parking in the lakes at Lindale area to alleviate some of the, the parking concerns.
I had one question. In the information we were provided with, there's an outlot C on the very southern portion, just south of Lot One. What's the intention for that?
Yeah, one, one possible, what John was just speaking about was, one possible option for that is as the home for the municipal parking ramp, something we just started a conversation about. So we, we recognize that Lake Winds does not need to build out that amount of space in order to make their plan work, and that there are a number of other possibilities for that. We don't have a specific plan for it yet. One might be municipal parking ramp. We have a right of first refusal on the apartment homes behind it, and so that is, that outlot would allow us to connect that property in the future if we were to buy those apartments back out to Lindale. It's more of a, it's, it's, we don't have a concrete plan for it yet, but we also know that Lake Winds doesn't need it in order to make their development work. We also did talk with staff about using it as proof of parking or event parking. We could valet park, you know, a hundred cars on that site during events. So there's a number of options for the outlot, but nothing specific yet.
And under the proof-of-parking scenario, what we could do is, you know, put some kind of restriction on that property that it could not be, you know, rezoned or, or used for something else for a period of X amount of time, whether that's a year after the development is complete, or six months, or eighteen months, or whatever, to, to make a determination as to whether the proposed parking is adequate. And if it's not, then, you know, definitely require parking, whether it's surface parking or ramp parking on that outlot as opposed to allowing more development to occur there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No. Madam Mayor Protem, you know, I really appreciate Councilmember Elliott bringing, you know, taking care of, of our taxpayer dollars by bringing that issue forward. And I think it's a very important one, and I'm, and I'm glad that he, that he mentioned it. You know, this project has received a lot of public scrutiny, and that's thanks to Cornerstone because you really have invited people in to, to look at, at your plans and to have some input. And then staff is dedicated, I don't know how many hours, to make sure that, you know, that really it's, it's going to be a project that we can be proud of because we do need, we do need something like this on that site. And I, I really have appreciated the collaboration that's taken place. So having said that, I will move that we approve the first reading of the ordinance amending Appendix One of the Richfield City Code, rezoning sixty-three thirty and sixty-four hundred Lindale Avenue, Avenue from general commercial and planned general commercial to planned mixed-use and single-family residential.
Second, any further discussion? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. I got my pages out of order here. Next item is the city manager's report.
Madam Protem, there's a, a member of the city council. I really don't have a report per se. I would, I'll, follow-up to what Councilmember Garcia mentioned. I believe the letter you're referring to is the one I wrote about the ERF or the Environmental Response Funds.
Right.
There's a, well, let me just back up a second. Hennepin County currently has the authority to collect a small percentage of mortgage and registry and deed tax revenues and use those for the assessment and cleanup of contaminated sites. And that's a very good program, and we in Richfield here have taken advantage of it a, a number of times. I think at latest guess, we've probably received something like a hundred fifty thousand dollars of help through that ERF. And there's a couple of bills in the legislature right now that are going through that would reinstate the authority for Hennepin County to collect those funds as a portion of those taxes and then, and continue to have an ERF fund. And of course, I think that's very important for cities like Richfield because, again, to be, be able to have those funds to help us make that initial phase-one, phase-two assessments on some of the contaminated sites is very important. And, and so to that end, I wrote a letter to our, to, I think, some of the authors of the bill plus our own, our own Senate and House representatives. So if that's what you're referring to.
Yes, yes, and I, and, and hopefully, everything will work out.
Yeah, I, it's, it's a good program. I surely hope that they continue it.
Sure. Well, thank you for, for doing it because sometimes things like that can be easily missed.
Yeah, you're right, they can, thank you.
Okay, claims and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we have no further business, so we stand adjourned.
Good job.